Call to order the Grant County Board of Commissioners Special Meeting of July 29th, 2017. Welcome, everybody. Please join us for the pledge of allegiance and the salute to the flag.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the vote for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the religion of God above all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the beautiful, perfect printage among the American culture.
Are there any changes that need to come to the agenda, Madam Manager?
Yes, sir.
Commissioners?
Yes, sir.
Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
There's a motion to approve the special meeting agenda. Any discussion on it? Motion. Can everybody hear me okay? All those in favor, so you can probably say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove the agreement A-1714, memorandum of understanding supporting community development of Fort Baird in Grant County, New Mexico. This is an agreement that I believe Mr. Ramos has championed.
Have we, hasn't been passed by Santa Clara yet? Okay, it's official.
And all the changes that we request have been spread.
Great, great. If that's the case, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion. We approve the agreement number A-1714.
I'll second that. There's a motion and a second to approve A-14, A-1714. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Withdrawal clause says the progress to disagree may at any time, whether without cause withdraw from disagree. Didn't say how. And don't you normally say how?
But in other, like JPAs that I've seen that in, oh, I apologize. We could, but in other JPAs that I've worked on, some of them have just said you withdraw and you just do it by resolution. If you want to.
We can add by resolution on this.
We can move this, well, it's already signed, so I have to go back to Santa Clara.
And I didn't want to suggest a change because of that fact. I just wanted to understand how it was going to work. And I guess that's enough of an answer. If it's by resolution, it'll be noticed in public.
We're having a meeting, we're having discussions.
Does that satisfy me, sir? I have no idea.
You can just be one of the members that just decides we have to, we have to go before you all.
Right.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, so you can probably say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, approve or disapprove amendment number two to agreement number A-1640 with the North Central Mexico Economic Development District, non-metro area agency on aging, for direct purchase of services. You want to go over that?
And then Chairman, another amendment to our grant agreement to provide services for our senior programs. This is a final one. We needed to get wrapped up prior to July 1st when we transferred to HMF, and this was just an increase based on our unit of service. You did one, what's your last name?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve amendment number two to agreement number A-1640.
A second. There's a motion and a second to approve amendment number two to A-1640. Is there any discussion on that motion?
So this might be a long topic, but are we, so we are on schedule for them to take over on July 1st?
Yes, they did receive their contracts and those have been signed, and so we are still, we are working frantically, closing up all the license this week so that they can take over the contract. Yeah, contracts have been done.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, so you can probably say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, the Gila Regional Medical Center Board of Trustees, final candidates, commissioners' questions and applicant comments to the following five candidates. Tom Blanchard, Don Gruber, Jeannie Miller, James Weisenberger, and Edwin Wilmot. So I have prepared little slips of paper up here, or I'm currently preparing. We've never done this before, so we are all somewhat perplexed on exactly how this is going to come out, so I'm kind of playing it a little loose, but I get to do that. I'm sitting in the middle. And so I'm preparing with first names on here, and I'm going to hand them to the assistant clerk, and we're going to draw them in a random fashion. I don't want anybody to think that they got to go first and it's good better, or they got to go last, so they get to talk about what everybody else talked about. I hope that's okay with y'all.
That's about as nice as it is.
Yeah, thanks for that. Good.
That's why we're sitting in the middle.
Not for long, man. I'm about half done here. With papers. So before we draw, you guys were sent a packet and it had three short questions. I've talked to a few of you already. This is not about the length of your talk. We've allowed five minutes. If you're slightly longer than that, we're probably not going to freak out about it. However, it's about the quantity, I mean, the quality of your talk. And realistically, the three questions, and I'm kind of paraphrasing because I don't have them in front of me, but never mind, I have them in front of me. Tell us briefly about yourself. Just your name, where you're from, how long you've been here, quick past of your jobs. Tell us why you think you'd be a great, because I think all of you'd be a great member of the Board of Trustees. Just, you know, three, four sentences. What sets you aside from everybody else? And three, what special skill or skills are you going to bring to the Board of Trustees that will change them up? And then after, after that's said and done, after each one of you gone, if, if the commissioners have a question for you, I assume you'll stand for questions. Is that all right with everybody?
So if there are any questions, ask the school, we all want to be here.
Okay, if that's okay with y'all, then let's do it that way. And the candidates are all okay and understand? And everybody shake your head.
I think that's the question that will come right after each individual presents.
Yeah, I think that's best, since we're taking notes and you already have that person's pad up and so.
Yeah.
All right, so who's first? Mr. Gruber is first. Good morning, welcome. Thanks for applying. It's, it's important to us that we had so many candidates this time.
I have to push the button?
Push the button until it turns red.
Okay. Yeah, my name is Don Gruber. I'm glad to be here. Commissioner and Chairman, it's, it's an honor really to apply for this position. I've been a member of this community in Grant County for about 40 years. My wife and I have had a couple of businesses. We both actually worked at the hospital for a number of years. I retired about nine, almost 10 years ago. I was Director of Respiratory Therapy, several other departments, polyseminography, electrophysiology, cardiopulmonary, and I was also the risk manager for about 25 years. I think that, that bit of experience brings something unique to this position. I don't have a big learning curve to learn about the hospital. I know lots of the doctors, know some of the employees. When I started at Hillcrest, there were 170, roughly 180 employees. When I retired from Gila Regional, there were 750. So it's grown a lot. We've done a lot more things through the years. We actually take care of less inpatients than we used to. And I still call it "me" because I feel like I'm still part of that hospital. I did 30 years of service there. The interesting thing about hospitals in this day and age, especially this one, is we're a little rural hospital. About 70% of our patients are Medicare and Medicaid. And because of that, the government sets the reimbursement rate, reimbursement rates for most things. Let's say two of us were in the hospital at the same time with the same diagnosis, same pneumonia. I took two, two days to get well, the other person took 10 days. The government says, well, we're going to pay you $2,000 for Mr. Smith and Mr. Gruber. Doesn't matter that you lose money on one or you make money on the other, that's what you're getting. And in this day and age, when 70% of our business comes from that portion of the reimbursement group, it's tough for a hospital to, to make a go of it. A hospital, just like any business, has to make a profit. If they don't make a profit, you just break even, you never grow, you never get any new services, you never get new equipment. So it's important that we keep that reimbursement level at its peak. I think those are just kind of my qualifications and what I could bring to the board.
Thank you, Mr. Gruber. Seeing by how many questions? Questions? No, currently, we may ask you back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that was succinct right there, about 2:46. Okay, who's next?
Tom Blanchard. Okay, my name's Tom Blanchard, and the only reason I'm here is that several of my clients asked me to run for the, this position. I've been in Silver City about four years. I've been in the health insurance business only since 1976. I have sit on the broker advisory board for the state of New Mexico's Be Well New Mex program. I have a pretty good knowledge of how health insurance works, how hospitals get paid, how doctors get paid, what kind of mistakes are made by hospitals, and how Medicare works, and how they could consider making some improvements on their billing systems, because I look at these bills on a daily basis. And that's the only thing I can input into the board is, how do they get money? And what is going on with this Health Care Act? There is a million different opinions, and everybody asks me what's going on. I don't know. I'll know more come July 1st, because then we'll know a little bit more who's left in the playing game. And we already know Washington DC is a mess, they cannot agree, and we just need to turn health care back over to the Division of Insurance in the state of New Mexico. And I think once the government realizes that, perhaps we can get to a better health insurance in this state. Because in this state, for the people that are covered by the Affordable Care Act, or how you would care, call it would be the Obamacare, these people have no choices basically in doctors. They are all limited to very restricted HMOs. And before, in 2014, we had Blue Cross Blue Shield offering a PPO to those people, but they had 143% loss ratio, and they asked for a 51% rate increase. And John, the Superintendent of Insurance says, no, sell Blue Cross and Blue Shield. Nope, we're getting out of it. So that's why they left this marketplace. Now we're stuck with New Mexico Health Care Connections, which the hospital accepts, another big, the doctor's office doesn't accept it. The doctors and hospitals cannot get along together what insurance they're going to accept for our local people that are covered by the Affordable Care Act. With Medicare, as long as a doctor accepts Medicare and a client has a decent Medicare supplement, those clients are in wonderful, good shape. It's the people that are under age 65 that have a problem. And I get these questions every day. So the only thing I can offer to the hospital board is a great knowledge about health insurance.
Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions? Thank you very much. Okay, who's next?
Ed.
Ed?
I'm not sure going first, last, or in the middle, it's best. I, I do know that I found a tie today, so at least I've been successful doing that. What an, what an amazing set of recommendations for her, for, wow, I'm already impressed at the selection you've got. But thank you, Commissioners, for allowing me to be here. I am a recent retiree to the community. I built my home with my wife here and, and made a very large commitment, I think, to the community about six years ago. And of the last six years, I've probably lived here about four. I'm going to focus on what might make me different. I know you've looked at my resume and my letter of interest, and I think the thing that I'd like to emphasize in that is the, my career was spent, the last 20 years of it was spent at the very highest levels of federal government. And I served at the interface boundary between the political and the career civil servant. So I understand governance versus management. I think that's an important distinction for you to keep in mind, that a lot of people that step onto corporate boards and, and participate want to actually take their experience and manage. And I think the most important thing for a board to do is to have a worldview and a strategic view that guides the CEO and the other key officers of, of a facility like the GRMC. I, I bring that knowledge and I bring that experience. I've, I've served with corporate boards in the community. I've also been a partner with corporate boards. I've seen at the very highest level international corporate boards working. I have a vision of what corporate management and governance is, and I think that kind of sets me apart from, from the crowd. I, I didn't realize everyone had their, their resumes in the packet, otherwise I would have read it and probably had a little better and more specific response. But I think that's something for you to think about, because it can be a problem if you have a number of people that, that sit on a board that have a lot of really good, fine expertise, that, that want to actually do the job. I've seen that a lot. So why did I think this job is right for me? I really want to participate in the community, but it's been my experience that I'm better off, since I give my heart and soul when I commit to something, that I pick the right thing that's a niche for me. I participated and was a member of the board on the Los Alamos Medical Center Hospital. I took on that role and the hospital was failing. It was, it was losing its accreditation. I don't think our hospital is in quite that position right now, but there were a lot of other problems that we dealt with as well. But we swapped out, in my team here, we swapped out a CEO, we, and we did a number of other things that I think are quite relevant to this hospital here. So I said to myself, aha, my niche, it's here. I don't know, Brett and, and, excuse me, Commissioner Caston and Commissioner Ramos, I've actually tried two or three times before, and you were very, very satisfied and thought it was very good to have incumbency, and you needed the continuity. This time, there isn't an incumbent, but now we've got a, wow, such fabulous competition, it's great. But I, I just want you to think about me in this, in this election as well. The last question is, what special skill do I bring? I, I think I have a breadth of experience, and I really think my executive experience is important. But if I had a special skill, it's my ability to deal with complexity. I, I deal with very complex problems. I have techniques and management skills as well as technical skills that allow me to understand complexity, simplify it, and explain it to, to people. I, I see interrelationships very well. This is a complex problem you're dealing with here. I believe those skills would benefit the board, and it's an unusual and a unique skill, I believe. Commissioner Brown, I tell you that really I, and one of my hobbies is transfinite arithmetic, so I really do enjoy complexity. Finally, I'll give you a performance guarantee. I will, I will resign if indeed you give me performance metrics before I step on this board. And six months from now, you look at my performance metrics and see how I perform, get input from Jeremiah, and I'll step down if I don't perform the way you expect me to. So that's my performance guarantee to you. I don't know what else to say, because I really would like this job. Thank you.
Happy to see your focus on transparency in, in the application you filled out. I wonder what that means in practice on the board of a hospital?
I think there are all sorts of opportunities. I, I can take the procurement. I, I have a contract, I was a contracting officer at one point in time, and we frequently faced the need to, to get public involved in contracting. It was a matter of just finding the, the appropriate opportunity to inject them, making drafts of contracts or drafts of proposals and RFPs, getting people engaged upfront. I think when major initiatives come about, I just think it's to talk about what you can talk about. I mean, I'd have to consult legal advice at, at the hospital, but it's just getting people engaged upfront, not at the end telling them what the result was. And so, Commissioner Brown, I just can't be specific unless you had a specific example to, that I could respond to. But it is just a matter of being conscious and constantly thinking about the need for that, and being aware that stakeholder involvement is crucial to the success of any democratic government.
Thank you. Further questions? Thank you, Commissioner Wilmot. So we're going to know the next order of everybody, so right here, that's mathematics. James, come on up.
Good morning. Good morning. First of all, I'd like to thank the Commissioners for allowing me to present myself in front of the Commissioners. I've been involved in health care most of my life, started in the mid-'70s. Before I go into that, I'd like to say that I know that the Board of Trustees is worried about finances, but I also believe there needs to be part of the board, representation of nursing and delivering patient care. And my background is, I started out in housekeeping, worked in purchasing, became an orderly, and now it's known as a nursing assistant, became an LPN and an RN. And in those years, I've worked in Arizona and in alcohol and drug rehab as an LPN for a couple of years, and also was involved in family interventions and getting people into this rehab center. I've been, I moved to Bisbee and Douglas, worked in Bisbee and Douglas hospitals for a couple of years, and in 1985, I moved to Grant County and worked, started working on Gila Regional Medical Center. Worked there for 14 years, 14 and a half years. And at that time, I was a house supervisor and for 14 months, I was a nursing direct, OR director, an OR director. I left Gila Regional and went to Fort Baird in 2003, and I worked there as a house supervisor and was also a director of a shutdown male unit on 3 East. And I left Fort Baird in '07 and went to TRC and worked at the Veterans Center there. And out there, I was a house supervisor, and I retired in '011. I came back to Grant County to live the rest of my life here in '13. I became concerned about what I've been hearing about some things that were happening at the hospital. For instance, I have a neighbor, a close friend of mine, and not this January, but the past January, she fell, broke her hip when she was out in the open, cold air for three hours. Her core body temp was about 86. She came to the hospital with a fractured hip on a Saturday, and it didn't do surgery on her until Monday night. In that time, she developed, after the surgery, she developed multiple clots in the lungs. The other story I have is another friend that's a paraplegic. Just 30 months ago, I visited him in the hospital, and they were taking a blood pressure on the arm that he got in IV site, and also he had a Foley catheter. And the Foley catheter, it's a drainage gravity, was over the bedside rail. Nobody put that down, I finally put it down. I'm concerned about what's happening at the hospital. My closing statement would be, I, I thought the guy was going to say. I feel my, that my past background and past experience in the medical and healthcare field would be, here we go again. My past background and past experience in the healthcare would be beneficial in helping the board's directors make sound fiscal decisions and also provide excellent healthcare, patient healthcare to Silver City area and all of Grant County.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Seeing by any questions? No? I did. I was letting everybody else go first. So just kind of briefly describe, because you were in a Veterans, I was going to TRC, and then you were at Fort Baird, and you were at Bisbee, and you were at GRC. Briefly describe, what do you feel like that, do you see things that are done differently in different places, and, and do we do some things that we should do differently? I don't know.
I went to the Veterans Center, I wanted to kind of wind down my career and work with geriatrics, and that's when, that's when I went to Fort Baird. And there I saw several things that weren't too good about patient care. So by me going there and being a house supervisor and also working for, as a house supervisor, I helped, I felt like I was helping the system along, and also became the director of the male shutdown, lockdown unit, which is pretty intense. That is with patients that have dementia and have dementia problems.
Oh, okay, okay.
Become violent. Decided to go to the Veterans Center because I was not in service and I wanted to do some service for my country, so I went to TRC and worked at the Veterans Center there, which was dealing with disabled veterans, dementia patients, and geriatrics veterans.
And I guess what I was referring to more is like scheduling and stuff like that, where, where you can, you can get more bang for your buck scheduling differently.
As a house supervisor, you're responsible for when you're on duty scheduling and making sure all floors are covered appropriately. When I was the OR director, I was also in charge of directing the OR and doing the financial statements there too.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anybody else? Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Jeannie? Sorry.
I'm getting shorter. Hi, I'm Jeannie Miller, and a little bit about me, I was born and raised in Stafford, Arizona, and I graduated from Stafford High School. I went to the University of Chicago and got a degree in sociology, a University of Arizona degree in mathematics, my master's. And I have a, an executive certificate from the Thunderbird School of International Management. I have served on a number of boards, and here in Silver City, I have been on the board of Western Institute for Lifelong Learning from almost the beginning, and I went through all of the positions on that particular board and was the president. I am also the co-chair of the Southwest Festival of the Written Word, and I've done that for tw- I've been on that board for, since its inception. I'm on the Friends of the Library Board, and I have been an auxiliary volunteer. So I retired from the city of Phoenix in, at the end of 20, of 2004. My husband had retired five years earlier because of major medical issues. We both wanted to come back to a small town. He was born in Bisbee, and as I said, I was born in Stafford. And we really wanted to come to Silver, but he was very hesitant because of his issues. But when we examined the medical community and the hospital facilities here, he said, okay. So I retired in December of 2004, and we were here in January of 2005. That's when I became an auxiliary volunteer. And he passed away a year and a half ago. And in this year, I've been thinking about what is it that I want to do, because I intend to stay in this community, and I believe in public service. And I went back to my roots, and I will go over my career here in just a minute, but I went back to my roots because my first jobs were in medical, electronic, or computerized medical records. So let me backtrack for a minute and tell you what my career was. I have had a 30-plus-year career in information technology. I started off, the first two jobs I had that are relevant perhaps more than any of the others, but maybe not. I, I was on the ground floor of the University of Arizona Medical Center and teaching hospital data processing department. It was our job to put in the systems at, at the hospital so it could open its doors. That's when I first found out about hospitals, and that's when I fell in love with hospitals. I went from that job to another job, which was with Bell Aerospace Company in Tucson that had a long-term contract with the Indian Health Service to develop and- that had a long-term contract with the Indian Health Service to develop and implement an automated medical record system way before what we're doing now throughout the Indian Health Service. And that job took me eventually to Alaska, took us eventually to Alaska, where I was hired to help implement that system into the Indian Health Service rural facilities. Life has a way of changing you, and so although my heart belonged to that whole environment of healthcare, I ended up in municipal government. And I have spent the last, the rest of my career in municipal and local government in IT. And for lack, instead of going through a million titles that I had, I'm going to use the term information technology because that's what it is now, used to be data processing. So, I have been an IT director in Thirbakes in Juneau, Alaska. I was the IT director for the Arizona State Attorney General's Office, and from there, I went to the city of Phoenix with the title of deputy city clerk. Deputy city clerk was, my son once said, "Mom, when I tell folks what you do, they think you type all day." And I said, "No, that's not what I do." I had the job of being in charge of the enterprise email system for the city of Phoenix, which at that time was the fifth-largest city in the United States, and which had won while I was there, the Berlinmann Award for the best-run city in the world, and also received many awards for IT innovation and progress. So, I was in charge of that, but as a deputy city clerk, I also rotated through all of the deputy city clerk functions and have seen how, I already knew how municipal government works, but let me tell you, when you're a deputy city clerk for the fifth-largest city in the country, it's pretty awesome as to what you find out. I am very familiar with governing boards, especially town councils and city councils, and I understand the fine line, actually, it's not even a fine line, I understand the line between governing boards and staff. I know how that works. So, the reason that I want to be on the board of trustees is because, as I said, I've been thinking about what I want to do, and what I want to do is go back to my roots and go back to healthcare delivery, and this seems like a really good place to start. I love this hospital, and I love hospitals. I am fascinated by them. And I, hospitals, in my opinion, are living organisms, and they, whereas in things like municipal government, things happen in silos, that doesn't happen in hospitals. In hospitals, if something goes wrong over here, it pops up over here. Hospitals exist only for the care and the well-being and the safety of patients, and if there aren't patients, there's no hospitals. So, that's where a hospital is, and that's why it exists. The Board of Trustees has an awesome charter or charge, and that is to run, make the hospital the best it can be, from, as Ed said, from 30,000 feet. And I bring to the table the skills, I have done systems analysis, I am a problem solver, I can analyze and I can synthesize back to solve, for solutions to problems. I have managerial experience, I have project management experience, I understand how to work with groups across organizations and without and outside of that particular organization. I understand, because of being in municipal government for so long, I understand the restraints and the confines that hospitals and public institutions have by virtue of statutes and laws and all of that. I believe in teamwork, I understand the issue of collaboration, of consensus building, and working within and without diverse populations, diverse communities. I appreciate your consideration of me, and I look forward to your decisions. And good luck to everybody. Thanks.
Thank you.
Questions?
Any questions? No? No? All right. Thanks, Jeannie. All right. Does anybody have any questions of any of the other candidates before we go into recess?
I'm curious, I don't know how we do this, but I'm curious how many Board of Trustee meetings at the hospital each of you has attended so far? First hand, do you?
I attended, I attended last week's meeting of the Board of Trustees, I attended the last budget meeting of the Board of Trustees.
Mr. Bollmer?
No. You want me to go?
Two years.
I was in Canada for two years, so if you go back before that, I even attended regular events.
Okay. Two years to report on the Board of Trustees.
Right. Right. I think several passed the board meetings, and the last one I attended, so
Okay. All right, unless there's anything else, I'll take a motion to recess. All those in favor signify with a sign and aye. We will reconvene a little quicker than 30 minutes, we will reconvene in 11. All those in favor signify with a sign and aye. Call back to order, the Grant County Board of Commissioners. Prior to going into the approval of one trustee, I want to say that, you know, I'm absolutely elated with the slate of candidates we had today. And I was going to yield the floor just for a couple of minutes to Chairman of the Trustees, Jeremiah Garcia, just to talk a little bit about the duties of a trustee.
Thank you, Chairman Caston, Commissioners, Mrs. Webb, and staff. This is an important day, and this is an awesome, awesome forum to bring a trustee to the hospital. This is something that I dreamed of as a candidate at one time, is I wanted a quality trustee coming into the hospital and bringing the tools to the table that we always need. And I think all of these trustees, including ones that did not make the cut, it's an honor that all of you put your name into the hat when it comes to how serious our healthcare is in our nation, in New Mexico, and especially in Grant County and the other counties we serve. So, for all of you, it's an honor to want to get to know each one of you a little bit. It's an honor that one of you will be a peer of ours. You must understand, we as trustees, I am a trustee. I may orchestrate as the chairman, but it's still the trustees that have to work together as a team. We encourage challenging decisions, we encourage everybody to really speak of mind. You know, I've been on many boards most of my life, I've met numerous people here, and I thought that, you know, I hit the elite boards, but let me tell you, being a Board of Trustee of a hospital is one of the most challenging, one of the most rewarding, and sometimes one of the most tough times that you have in your life. And, but again, you're looking at the future of our healthcare in our community and in our hospital. So, I'd like to thank you for this. I just came from a symposium just recently, and one of the speakers talked about trustees, and this is very important for us to understand. They identified five Ps of a trustee. And what we expect from a trustee is one, presence. You must show up to meetings, it's very important. How can we make decisions if we don't show up to meetings? Or you're catching up later on, later on, later on. I know in our bylaws, we talk about absentee, we talk about things like that, but there's ways to make it up. You can call in, you can do numerous things. But this is one of the five Ps we talked about. To be committed to a hospital as a trustee, our expectations would be that you try to make every meeting, every board meeting, every special meeting, and again, one of the main things that we need to really go on is transparency within our community and with our physicians and with numerous key stakeholders in our community. So, that's important. Preparation. You know, in the past, I've been on boards and even on this board, that our expectations are that each trustee must read and do their homework before coming to a Board of Trustees meeting. They must prepare themselves for committee meetings. You need to understand the information that's out there. We don't need to be educating a trustee during a meeting, they should have educated themselves and asked the right questions to particular committee members. They must, you know, look at these committees, even though they're not on, and understand what's happening in the world of healthcare. This definition is giving input. We don't expect any trustee to be a puppet, to be someone that just nods their head and votes with the dean. We believe that you should give input. We believe you should challenge other trustees. It's so important. And again, educate yourself before you make decisions, it's so important. There's another thing going on with healthcare when we're looking at financing. This is a new one for all of us, developing PACs for healthcare in our community. It doesn't mean just the hospital. If we have to advocate for our physicians, our nursing teams, other healthcare organizations within our community when it comes to community healthcare, any of them, we may need to start establishing things as we look at our legislatures going up to Santa Fe, and look at ways we can do things and get buy-in from them to help support us when it comes to our governor and come to our finance committees and things to help support rural hospitals. It's real important. And the last one is called payment. Payment means pay your dues. Know your legal responsibilities as a trustee. You must understand policies, we must develop policies, we must understand governance, management, and our roles as trustees. Again, I thank each one of you for doing, stepping up, putting your name in the hat. I must thank our commissioners. Our commissioners done an exceptional job of looking at all of these candidates and narrowing it down to now five. This is the way it should be done. One, it's transparent. Two, there's no political agenda here. They're looking at the quality of each of these trustees. And we look at the future of where we need to be in six months, a year, two years, and five years from now. Healthcare is going to continue, as we listen to some of the candidates talk. We know the impact is starting from up in Washington, down to our state level, and down to our communities. And we, again, want to keep our doors open. We want to look at the highest quality of service that we can provide to our patients. And again, we need to be the greatest hospital that can be in this community. So, I thank each of the candidates. I thank our commissioners for doing it this way. It's very open, and this is going to be a challenging task for you as commissioners. I know that during the meet and greet, I was challenging Commissioner Edwards and Commissioner Brown, saying, "Let's get the best candidate we can in here to help us move forward, to help us make those critical decisions that are coming upon us." And all I can say is, I'm proud and honored to be a trustee. And again, I am a trustee, I am only one vote. But again, we as a team, we can agree to disagree, and we can agree to agree, but again, in the bottom scheme of things, the bottom line is, we must make decisions. And I challenge each of these people here, that if you are nominated to be a trustee, that we accept you with open arms, we'll do an orientation, and we will do things what we call the right way. And that, because many years ago, when I became a trustee, I was a little confused in that I come from a different world in business, and I thought I knew it all. But let me tell you, healthcare is a challenge, and it's very complex. And again, I think Mr. Fisher asked me about, you know, a new trustee. Mr. Ben Fisher. Our favorite man, Ben. But anyway, he said, "Well, Jeremiah, why aren't we waiting to, on officers and things like this? We need to move on, and this is the time of year that we select officers before the first, July is the first part of our year, okay? And we have to move forward with our officers. Whoever comes into this slate is going to be new to all of us. We don't know them personally, we may know a few of them a little bit, but it's going to just give us some time for them to transition into healthcare and the complexity as a trustee. So, we're going to give them that time to grow, and as they grow, we hope that we have a succession of trustees in place. Because I only have a year, and my term's done. We have a few others that their terms will be done, and we need to make sure that with the Board of Trustees and the Commissioners, that they select the right people to continue the process of helping the hospital move into the best it can be. So, thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, candidates, and I look forward to seeing, seeing what happens here.
Yeah, that's, that's I miss all of us. So, yeah, thanks, Jeremiah. Does anybody want to withdraw your name now that you know how wordy Jeremiah is?
And also, I just want to say one thing. A lot of people, we used to go out and try to recruit, because no one would put their name in their hat for being on a Board of Trustees.
That's true.
And we used to always say, "Oh, it only takes a, an hour, a month out of your time." I'm telling you, I'm going to tell you the truth, it's not hours, it's not an hour. It's many, many hours of committees, it's many hours of meet and greeting physicians that may be coming to our community that we're trying to recruit. It's many hours of retention of our physicians and nurses. It's many hours of caring for our patients and looking at our contractors that provide services. There's many hours involved. I don't want to scare anybody away. If you really believe and you have this passion to serve, don't back down.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so as I stated a couple of times now, we have never had to do this before. So, I'll just put this out to you guys. I think we'll take nominations, a nomination will require a second. And do you want to take two? We could take three, but somebody would have to second or nominate more than one that way. Is two enough? You want to do three?
Well, I explained what I thought was to do. We can just explain who our top two was and see if we have a common candidate. That was what I thought might work best than the individual one at a time approach.
You're welcome to do that. We'll give each Commissioner a minute, a couple of minutes to talk, and since it's your idea, you can go first.
That's okay. Well, thank you, I appreciate that. And I won't need a couple of minutes. Okay. I think there's frequently an emphasis on whether someone has long roots in a community or not, and it's my perspective as one who doesn't have as long roots in this community as many, that that needs to be balanced with an appreciation for breadth of experience in life. And that what I believe makes a board very functional is a combination of those things, a deep understanding of the community, but also an excellent understanding of the breadth of possibilities that are out there in the world that we don't always get to see here. And that is the basis for my selection of my top two. We have amazing candidates, I really hope all of you consider applying again in a year. But the two who I believe have the breadth of experience that I want to see join our Board of Trustees are Mr. Wilmot and Ms. Miller. Those would be my top two choices.
Okay. Commissioner Billings?
I agree with Commissioner Brown's comments about breadth of experience, that's why my number one choice would be Don Guber. His experience, he was direct and to the point, he knows the healthcare business, he's certainly not a rookie. And my number two, you know, it's difficult, we had some very qualified candidates, and I'm extremely pleased about that. I think my number two choice would be, sorry, Jeannie Miller.
Commissioner Edwards?
So, I would reiterate the comment
So I would reiterate the comments of Commissioner Brown as well, and I just want to emphasize that my appreciation for the quality of candidates that applied and would certainly encourage you to apply again next year. This is an ongoing process, it's a board of trustees of seven, and it's an ongoing process to get quality candidates. My choices will be Jeanie Miller and Mr. Wilmott, Ed Wilmott.
Mr. Vice Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I, I totally agree, we have some great candidates, and I'm, I was real happy with, with the whole slate, even for the first review that we had. And it's, I think we went with any of these candidates, we'd, we'd be doing very well. But since we have to select two, I would go with Mr. Don Guber and Mrs. Jeanie Miller.
Well, I hate to tell you guys, but I think we got one that is popped out in the lead. And I too think Don Guber and Jeanie Miller would make excellent trustees. I also think James would make an excellent trustee, so, but my top two are Don and Jeanie also, so Jeanie has five of us, so if, that's pretty unanimous if anybody wants to make a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we accept this Jeanie A. Miller as our trustee.
There's a motion, a second, to approve Jeanie Miller as the trustee of the Board of, of Hila Regional Medical Center. Any discussion on the motion?
Thank you for this process.
Well, it was a lot cleaner night, I could see all kinds of bad things going on.
I do want to thank the commissioners for this process, we talked about transparency, and that's a, that's a buzzword, that means we're going to hide things usually, but this is more that we're not hiding things, and we're going to be more transparent. But this was transparent, I appreciate the community members that came and met the candidates, thanks to the candidates, I hope you will reapply as soon as there's an opening on the board of trustees.
I believe there's two spots available in June of next year, so.
Thanks.
So, okay, all those in favor signify with a sigh of aye. Motion passes. Congratulations, Mr. Don. Okay, at this time, we'll stand for commissioner comments if there are any. Okay. Once again, thank you guys, the best slate of candidates we've had since I've been a commissioner, please apply again. Just because you didn't get in doesn't mean you weren't great, it just means that today, Mrs. Miller outshined you a little bit, not a lot, because you all were great. So thank you very much, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor signify with a sigh of aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.